And we're recording.
Okay. All right. Well, I have six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would also look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda from Trustee Rodden, and I have a second from Trustee Ward. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item number five, public appearances. This is the time when anyone in the audience who would like to address the village board may come forward, provide your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Be aware that this is a time to speak about issues that are not on the agenda, and no action will be taken on these items this evening. However, they could be referred back to staff for further review. Anyone wishing to come forward this evening? Okay, thank you. Item number six, presentations. Pulaski School District, referendum questions. Allison Space, Superintendent, and Mark Logan, Director of Business. Please come forward. If you need another chair, bring one with you.
She said she's happy to stay back.
It's good to have backup. Welcome.
So I'm Allison Space. I'm the Superintendent of Pulaski Community School District, and this is Mark Logan. He is the Director of Business for the school district. And if you don't know, you do by now, that we are going for a referendum here on November 8th is on Election Day. And I'm going to have Mark talk a little bit about our two questions. But just to give you a little bit of history about how the referendum has shaped and formed, we've taken the past 18 months. We have done our homework. We have surveyed. We've had listening sessions where the public has come in and done some feedback with us out of our area schools. We've talked to all of our staff and asked them and had them give us feedback on what the needs are. And right now, we're bursting at the seams in some areas of our school district, and we do have, we have some facility needs as well. And also, in the days of our, you know, the employability and how things are looking in education, we also are seeing some compensation differentiation between ourselves and the, in the area school districts. So we also have an operating question on the ballot. So from that, we did a community survey. We had very good results come from over 20% of our families did, I mean, community members did fill out the survey, which they said that that was very high. So we know that we have good interest. And from that, we were asked by our board to narrow the scope a little bit of what we were asking for. In the beginning, we had several things in there that, that come, that we had taken from our listening sessions, things such as a new swimming pool, because our pool is almost 50 years old, a new fitness center. And these are just some of the biggies, because I know that they've been kind of the talking points in the, in the community. And also some indoor turf, which some of our school districts in the area do have. Though, none of those things are in this referendum. So at this point in time, we, and then when we brought these two questions forward that tested very well, an operating piece and then the facilities piece, we were even asked to narrow the scope a little bit further, which we did by getting input from, from the board and working with our administrative team. So I'm going to have Mark just talk a little bit about the scope of the operating referendum piece and the facilities piece.
Sure. So if you are a resident in our district on the ballot, you'll have two questions. The first one is to exceed the revenue limit, starting at 1.5 million for the next school year, continuing for the following four up to 1.9. And then 6.9, 69.8 million would be issuing debt for projects, mostly focusing on space at two elementary schools, Hillcrest and Sunnyside, and then district-wide needs at all school buildings, and then high school tech ed expansion area. So on the information provided, it has mill rate impact. The district has seen a declining mill rate for the last three years. This would put us back to where a mill rate was in 2019, 2020.
So if you have any questions for us about the upcoming referendum? This is very basic information. I can let you know that if you are, want more in-depth information, our website is loaded with it, and you can have, you can see all of those, the graphics that go along with. And I believe within here, we have some.
Thank you. I think you have a lot of information right here. Other questions? Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven, that is the consent agenda. Item A is, are the previous minutes of the village board meeting from 9:19, 2022. Item B, Treasurers' Report, August 2022. And item C, authorization, authorize the village president to sign on behalf of the village board a letter of support for the Village of Alloway to request the closure of the Green Bay Correctional Institute. By my means?
As usual. I, I don't, I, I have a problem with supporting the closure of that without knowing if there's a plan. So I'm, I guess I'm against this consent agenda.
That's what I was going to ask for, actually. Can we pull C out of this consent agenda?
Okay.
And vote on that separately?
There.
There you go.
There has been numerous plans for putting, for that area. Everything that's gone on there is incredibly expensive because it's so old, and it's on the historical registry. So anytime that they make something or upgrade something, like they just put in a brand-new showers in for the inmates, there has to be a quarter-inch gap between the actual building and the building that they've made, so it doesn't touch it. It's incredibly expensive to heat. It's, and they've had, I believe Stefan says, been working on a plan for residential plus some retail space because of the value of the property. So there's been stuff in there, plans for at least 10, if not 15, years worth. The residents just, they see it as an eyesore, and there's, that facility is consistently over, overpopulated, and they just want it out.
But without a plan?
They have a plan.
They have a plan.
They've had plans for 15 plus years.
Okay. I don't have one, so I'm.
Well, they're not, you don't live in Alloway, they're not going to present the plan to you. I mean, if you wanted to, you could go there. It's.
That brings up the question, is what's the relevance of our, doing this resolution?
I, I would imagine kind of solidarity. I'm not sure.
Then to her point.
Well, I mean, we can talk about it a little bit. So at our HALO meeting a couple of weeks ago, the village administrative of Alloway, as well as Representative Stefan, made a presentation with the, the same documents that were attached to your packet, essentially wanting the support of other municipalities in Brown County. Like you said, it's kind of like a solidarity thing. Absolutely not necessary that you approve anything. They're just asking for more support so that the state and the governor, whoever is going to be elected, sees that there's broad support for the closing of GBCI.
So in that HALO meeting, when Representative Stefan's, and was it the village president of Alloway?
It was their administrator.
Their administrator. When they presented, they, they presented it to the folks attending the HALO meeting. I was there, and they asked that we sign it in that meeting. And that was not something I was comfortable with. I'm the only one person. My, so I wanted to come back to the board specifically to have this discussion and to get your viewpoints out there. So, you know, is this something that we need to, would we need to move it out of the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Oh, no, you could just pull it out at this meeting and continue on this conversation.
Okay. So, so saving, saving the discussion that we would have on this, could I get a motion to remove this from the consent agenda?
Motion to remove.
Yeah. Why don't we just make a, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A and B. Is that fine? Does that work? And then we can just take C?
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion to approve consent agenda, items A and B. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Andrews, and the motion was Mr. Rodden, Trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right.
So I've talked to Representative Stefan's, gosh, that was maybe two years ago, about this at further length than, I agree that it should be closed, and disappointed it got vetoed. And I support, you know, this, this, I guess solidarity between communities, saying, hey, this, this is a better area served. Our state needs to understand that and create a new prison system somewhere else. And I can't remember, where's the latest proposal? Maybe you know, Mike, for the.
Well, Representative Stefan at that meeting talked about their most recent plan is to redistribute those existing inmates into existing facilities that may be expanded in the future.
Uh-huh. Okay. Because I know there was this idea that, you know, I think it was out by the Rice Town area or somewhere out there, that they were going to build a new facility.
That was one of the proposed, but administrator said that the most logical until that could be completed would be to redistribute.
Okay.
So, you know, my concern on this is, we talk about redistributing the pot. So my concern was this, what, what's the plan going forward? We're going to close this prison, and I get it that it's old. I get it that it's very dangerous. I get it that it's overpopulated. Those are all good reasons to close that particular prison. But then what are we going to do with this population? We're, we're going to redistribute the population? Where are we going to redistribute these people? Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we have a significant delta across the state with regard to correctional workers? In some cases, we're running at 50% or less?
For which, are you talking uniformed security staff?
Uniformed security staff.
Depending on where you go, yes. Right now, I believe GBCI is, last time I talked to someone, they were about 25% under.
25% over, and their population is like?
Their, last time I saw it, which was about a year and a half ago, they are just suited for under 1,000, like 900.
And they have 1,400?
1,275 was the last time.
So, so my question is, the plan, the plan going forward, that concerns me. So we're going to redistribute. So we're going to move this, we're going to move what's this, we're going to move this problem all over the state to other places and make a bigger problem in other places in the state. And then eventually, are we going to build a prison? And then who's going to finance that prison?
It would be through the state.
It would be through the state, but who, 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 who funds the state?
It would be all of us.
All of us. So.
It's, it's been, like I said, it's been on the books, been planned for, it's just hasn't been implemented because the, the age of that, because there's, that one, Green Bay is old, so is Wapah.
Right.
Those have to be, but Wapah also has a new wing. Everything else has been updated, like Oshkosh, Red Granite, all those are newer.
So we're fortunate having you on the board. I mean, with your professional experience and background in this, and the details that you provide. So I think that we've, we're, this is a very valuable discussion to be having. Do you feel that there is a plan in place that addresses this issue without making it a problem in other places?
Yes, because one of the things that was brought up in the very beginning was where to put the individuals. That was part of their initial plan, because if you remove them, like you said, you've got to put them someplace. And everybody's overcrowded now.
Everybody's overcrowded now.
Everybody's overcrowded. There has been plans of making more, another minimum and medium place. So you can get, ease the restraints on some of the other facilities. Because right now, you have, everybody has to go to Wapah or Green Bay. They, everybody has to go. And then after that, they trickle down into medium or minimum. So what they would be able to do is, they would be able to move more from Oshkosh or Red Granite down to minimum, like Sanger Powers or something like that. They would be, and those facilities are much cheaper to run, much cheaper.
Sure. They're, because they're newer.
No, it's just the type of person, the type, they don't have as many programs, because those are individuals that actually go out and work in, think of it as like Huber.
Okay. So one, one last question, or one last question for the group to discuss, and Administrator Kaker, please chime in, or Deputy Sheriff Pizani. So my question is, let's say we sign on to this. Let's say that we, as Swamaco, sign on to this, and we get behind this for whatever it means, right? And it goes to the state, and the state decides to close this down. Whatever plan they come up with at that point, we have no discussion over that. If they would decide, we're going to close it down, and we're just going to build a new one in Brown County, in Swamaco, or anywhere else, I mean, that's just, we, we have no, very little discussion over that. We would, as Swamaco, in certain, in terms of planning, but.
You have an opinion, but there's really no.
Very little that you can do, right? Because you would fall under eminent domain, or?
And it's, from my understanding, it's just one municipality reaching out, saying, hey, can we get some support for this? Because our constituents, we have, we, we don't have any stake in the game, per se.
Right.
It's just us being neighborly in supporting or not supporting.
There is a, I mean, there is a slight economic development relationship. I mean, if they can redevelop that site and bring in businesses and residential units, that is going to help your county tax bill. So there is a potential slight impact on Swamaco residents and the benefit.
And tax, the property tax and whatnot.
There's that image of the vision of the future, or for the future, on the last page.
That's pretty much the same, same as I seen.
I can't really tell what it is. Is this like apartment complex setup?
It's all open inside of it. The, the red marks, if I recall the, the presentation, that's going to stay because that is on the registry. Everything else, the orange and all that, that is all new. It's all going to be emptied out in here, as far as.
I call it an excuse.
Is this a big lazy river or something?
There's a creek, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, bottom line is, they're looking out for their constituents. I'm looking out for mine. What, what if I say, okay, yeah, we should shut it down? And then, like Sky said, what if they think they're going to come here with it?
What if they don't?
What?
What if they don't?
What if they don't?
We play the what-if game.
We, I know, but there's no plan. Why, why would I, I don't know.
No plan that you know of.
There's, okay.
Well, that was your point, though.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I would, because you didn't, you, you don't live there. You haven't, you don't work there. You, you don't go to the meetings and whatnot. I'm sure if, if you would like Stefan's to come over and, and give the, the whole plan of the redistribution, the, the phase-out, I'm sure he would, but it's not really.
So I, I think that if I were to come before this board and ask this board to make a resolution on something, that I would come before the board.
Yeah.
Right? And what we're, and I appreciate that it happened at a HALO meeting. It's probably been going on for a lot longer than I've been paying attention. I admit that, right?
What, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, someone should come before the board and support this resolution so that we can ask those pointed questions of that person, instead of us doing a resolution based on some documents. I mean, there's another, that's just my, that's my opinion. If it, if it's important enough for us to sign a resolution, should be important enough for them to show up. If Swamaco were to want something, like the villages to do something, I would think we would, or someone like you, would go there, right, and present our case.
That's what I, that's part of the reason why I wanted to pull it out, is we need someone here to, to talk about this, and if Representative Stefan's wants to, I, I think it'd be great. You know, again, I've talked to him, gosh, two years ago, I think it was. And this has been discussed for a long time, and it's needed. It, it's needed because of the way the, the prison is set up and the costs. You know, at the end of the day, it will save all of us dollars as residents of the state of Wisconsin. But to that respect, we're signing a resolution that we don't know all the details about. So, I mean, I think it'd be fair enough to make a motion to, to table it until someone can.
Get behind that.
Provide a, you know, some sort of presentation.
Sure.
And I'll just say one more thing, is we've talked a little bit about today. Realize I'm beating the dead horse a little bit, and I apologize, but we've talked a little bit about, where are they going to put them? Well, it's also possible they just release 1,000 prisoners throughout the state to make room. Early release.
That would be your immediate.
I know. They're not going to, well, I hope they would. No axe murderers.
They didn't release from there.
Yeah. Anyway.
Okay. So do we have, do we have, is there a motion that anyone would like to make with regard to this item?
I'll make motion to table item, item C on the consent agenda for a future board meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to table this item for a future board meeting by Trustee and a second by Trustee Schneider. Did you want to put any additional verbiage in there with regard to having someone show?
No, Steph knows.
I understand the motion.
Very good. So we have a motion that's been made and a motion seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion and the expertise. All right. Moving down the line, item number eight, administrative items, ATV, UTV on village roadways. One, calls complaints from October 20, 2021 through September 20, 2022. DEO Pizani. And item two, possible UTV, ATV ordinance amendment, ordinance 2022-17. First, this is a first reading, so I would turn it over to DEO Pizani.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a one-year review, or the 11-month review, if you want to be technical about it, of our law enforcement contacts since the passage of the ATV, UTV ordinance to allow ATVs, UTVs on village roadways. Within those 11 months, we've had 25 complaints called in from residents. Those break, break down as six noise complaints, five non-route complaints, being someone driving on a roadway that's not authorized. Four that were just listed as juvenile complaints. Someone calls in, says teens are riding down the road. Whether or not that's, there was an actual violation, it's to be seen that's just what the complaint was. Three that were operating outside of hours, three registration complaints, two, two speed complaints, one listed as just general reckless driving, that could be noise, could be speed, just the complaint that noted it as reckless. And then one damage complaint. So in addition to the 25 complaints from the residents, officers did conduct six traffic stops. Four warnings were issued, two warnings for registration, one warning for non-rout operation, and one that was listed as a passenger violation. Whether that was an ATV violation or a UTV violation, I don't have any information. It was just listed as a passenger violation. Three citations were issued, one for no insurance, one for an operator operating without a helmet, and that would be someone under the age of 18, and one for an unregistered ATV or UTV. The four categories below are from the 25 complaints from residents. Five of those calls were created by officers. Those are traffic complaints and extra patrols that officers conducted. Those are based off of resident complaints. So if somebody had called previous, said there's someone driving on a non-route right around this time, we have that initial call, and then we have some subsequent calls that officers create for that extra patrol. Doesn't mean that there was an additional complaint for that. Out of the contacts that officers had, five are listed as educational contacts. So what that might be is somebody calls in speeding complaint, ATV or UTV speeding down the roadway. We go to check the area, we don't quite find anybody on the roadway that's speeding, but hey, there's a ATV or UTV that's in the driveway here. I'll stop out there and have a little conversation with the owner there, see how things are going, if they saw anything, knew anything. We create that as an education, or count that as more of an educational contact. So it's beneficial. We don't just want it to, to go away. So our officers are doing a little bit extra with those. There was one accident that involved an injury that was on private property, and one damaged a property that was complained upon, some tracks in, in a, in a front lawn, I believe. Those are all the calls that were made into the sheriff's office within that 11-month period.
You don't have anything for comparison for the year or two or three before?
That I do not. Just happens to be that in the last two, three years, we changed our, our computer dispatch systems, and our old Motorola, Motorola system is not searchable at this time. That's the one that we actually had the longest. Unfortunately, I just don't have the ability to search that right now.
Is that going to change?
Potentially. It's not really on the forefront. Yeah, it's, it's on the back burner, but that is something that would change in the future. And requests, I guess, for comparison were automobile contacts and complaints from that same timeframe. We had 20, 234 reckless driving complaints, 88 calls that were listed as traffic complaint. Now, traffic complaint, that's a very new category for the sheriff's office, so those numbers are a little bit, little bit lower. Typically, we would create a crime prevention screen when we're out, kind of watching a specific area for violations, that we've had a history of violations or ongoing complaints. We'd create a crime prevention screen. We don't do that anymore. All those crime prevention screens are for a specific building or business. What we're transitioning to is the traffic complaint screen now. So we're going to start seeing that a lot more. So that'll be a valid number as the years go by, go on. We've had 746 calls that were listed as traffic stops with 395 warnings issued, 583 citations issued, and 227 crashes with 15 of those listed as injury crash. So for what that's worth.
Any questions on the data that Deputy Pizani provided?
Just a quick one. So have, do you have any arrests associated with these two groups? Or is that not how that works?
What are you referring to by?
Like, any kind of an arrest, where, so a citation, right? That's where you would stop me for going over the speed limit, and you'd write me a ticket. That's a citation.
Right.
But if you cuff me and take me off to jail, that's what I consider an arrest.
Okay. I don't have that data.
We have citations.
I don't think I'd actually be able to.
Right. No, I'm just curious.
I don't think I'd be able to do an individual search on that without having to go through each and every traffic stop. What I mean by that is searching a specific incident number that's associated with that traffic stop and seeing what the disposition actually was. And if somebody was transported to jail, I'd have to actually go through each note.
Okay. That's fine. You don't need to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It would take quite some time. If there are no further questions on the data, I'll move into the second part. There was a request for a first reading to an amendment to the ATV and UTV ordinance. This would be ordinance 2022-17, which would extend the allowable hours of operation from 10:00 PM to 11:00. And then it would allow anyone in the village to operate an ATV or UTV between the hours of 5:00 to 8:00 AM for the sole purpose of accessing the waters of Green Bay for recreational activities. Currently, this is only allowed east of Highway 41, and this would open it up to anybody in the village, as long as it was still on the approved route map. So any questions on the potential amendment to the ordinance?
What if you're, what if you want to take it to work, and you work for 8:00?
Then you would not be able to.
Is there, is there a way we can modify this first reading, or?
Sure.
Yes.
If you, if you, so it's kind of a gray area. If you change it substantially, and the question would be, is that change substantial? You should really re-advertise the first reading.
So, just real quick, I, I think, you know, Michael brought this before the board on behalf of his Swamaco ATV, UTV club. I asked him to send me what the neighboring villages were. Pittsfield, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Little Swamaco has a little, no limits. Pulaski has no limits. And Hobart has 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So I think, again, I'm just one voice here, but I think the ordinance change should be no person shall operate an ATV, UTV on any village streets from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, except as permitted in the state statute, and completely remove the second sentence. That's consistent with the other villages around us, that from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, you can't operate them on the roads.
I wouldn't disagree, but is that a significant enough change that we should have to re-advertise it? Re-advertise it and revisit this?
Yeah, and I think that's fine.
I would say so. I would say so.
So that, I mean, that would cover the work thing, too, then. I mean, it doesn't have to be a specific purpose for going to the waterways, which...
I don't know how you enforce that, you know, are you gonna pull people over and say?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, somebody could be headed to work with a, with a pole in the back of their... You know, I'm gonna stop at work first, work during the day, and then go at night. I mean, you can't really enforce it, so...
You'd have to follow them.
I think some of that, I think some of that language that was put in the original one was, I don't wanna say negotiations, but, you know, a little give and take last year. And as you've seen from, I think, the complaints and the calls, it's substantially less than I would have thought. I think not only the club that's here in Swamaco, but I think just people around have been courteous that have been using them. You know, you're gonna get that 2% or that 1% that's gonna cause issues, just like you do with automobiles, motorcycles, or any other form of transportation, so...
I did have doubt from last year, putting doubt when I made my...
He's out of order.
Yeah, you're, sorry, you'd be out of order.
Yeah, so...
Sorry.
Again, to stay consistent with the other villages around us, so there's not confusion for people as well. You know, Pittsfield, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I don't think they've had issues, or at least from what I've researched, they haven't had a whole lot of issues either. And it would just be consistent with the people, with the villages around us. I mean, Little Swamaco has nothing. That's to our north. Pulaski has nothing. I know that's a little bit further out. And Pittsfield's our neighbor. And I, I don't know where we connect to Hobart at all. I don't know if we do.
No.
With the exception of Pulaski, though, all those places don't necessarily have the population density either. You have to keep that in mind, too.
Right.
You're delaying, delaying the, delaying everything by adding this, although, I mean, I'm not against what you're saying, but you're delaying the process, so...
Oh, and I don't have any, I don't think anybody has any problem delaying the process if we have to redo the first reading next, next board meeting. I, that's just my thought.
I, I agree. May as well just do it right, as right as we think we can do it, and, you know, my opinion.
Right was, we were going to be fair to the rest of the community with taking steps and seeing how everybody is handling it. So far, they've been handling it great. I mean,
Right.
When you see 31, between complaints and traffic stops, 31, compared to the three with the automobiles, which is over 1,000, I mean, it's...
Apples and oranges, though. How many people own a car versus how many people are in a...
Right, there's more cars on the road, so...
You can't compare those two.
Well, you know, I did some, just doing some math here, too, and this is, I appreciate this report. I think we should continue to look at this in a yearly basis, you know, or just make it part of our regular data. But we've got a baseline, you know, that's what I look at here, is we've got some baseline data to follow in years to come. But there was only, really, I mean, there's only one number when I started to take it apart a little bit that stuck out with me, and that was traffic complaints. So when I look at traffic, when I look at traffic complaints for vehicles, 88, is there any similarity between traffic complaints of 88 and complaints from residents of 25?
No, traffic complaints, as they relate to automobile contacts, those are created by the officer.
They're created by the officer?
Right.
So they're not created by the residents?
Correct.
So really, we really don't have any kind of comparison?
Other than the reckless driving complaints, those are the ones that are called in by the residents.
So there's 234 reckless, and those are resident calls. So if you're gonna do a comparison, it would be 25 to 234.
Okay. So 25 and 234.
Or would it be 25 to 1?
I couldn't do a breakdown of the reckless driving complaints.
Or 234 to 1, I mean.
You know, here's the thing, here's the thing. And this, this, this is, that's why I asked that question. We can sit here and we can pick this data apart and look for stuff all day long, but, you know, the numbers themselves don't show that there is anything here. You know, it shows that for whatever purposes, whatever reservations, we're out, and there are still, you know, when you look at the complaints, six people still are complaining about noise. There's nothing that's ever gonna make them love ATVs and UTVs, and there's gonna be that portion of the population. But the data, the information that we have in front of us, doesn't show that this is having a significant, creating a significant issue. Now, that could change, and that's why I say we need to baseline this and follow it going forward and try to get better data, you know, better comparative data that we can look at. But I, I don't know, I just, I don't, I don't see any there, there, to use that cliche, there, there.
No. So, and I agree with all that, you know, again, like I said before, I thought there'd be more. And there really, there really isn't. And I think, use a term that Michelle doesn't like, self-policing, but I think there's been...
Ooh, careful with that.
I think there's been a lot of individuals that have talked to other individuals, that they're doing something dumb. I think the club has done a good job of communicating out to residents what you should and shouldn't do. I follow that site, and people seem to abide. I don't mind, and I don't care if it goes to a first reading again next board meeting with that whole second sentence, because I think that just creates confusion for law enforcement. How do you enforcement, how do you enforce it? Someone said, you know, if we're consistent with Pittsfield from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, I think that's consistent across the board. If someone's, Michelle brought up a good point, you know, I think people have brought these to work if they live, work in the village. You know, I don't know who's doing that, but I'm, I think some people have done that. Michael, I think you probably, you haven't yet, no?
Can't, if you'd like to work before 8:00.
Ah.
So you're waiting for this to go through?
There you go.
I mean, I might do it once or twice, if not.
You have a fishing pole.
So do you need a, do you need a motion or anything?
I think I understand the direction of the board. I don't have a motion.
You're changing the 5:00 AM for the start time?
Just simplify it by just...
5:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Yep, so...
I don't think we can just change it, though.
No, 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 no. Yeah, but I think, again, for the first reading, have it, remove the whole second sentence, and just have it from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM that you can't use it.
We just wouldn't even have number two.
Yeah, just take number two out.
We would change the allowable hours.
Right, yeah, you'd remove number two in its entirety.
Okay. We'll look forward to seeing this for its second first reading.
Don't, don't.
Did you have any thoughts? Should we open up the floor? No.
There's, this is a first reading, so there's no motion.
So we can just kick it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Fine.
But thank you for putting the data together.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mark, for that information.
Terrific. Okay, moving on to item number nine. Finance items, item A, resolution 22022, amending allowable levy limit. Director Lee Joyce.
Thank you. The village has an unused levy carryforward of $4,882 from 2019. That's due to an assessor's correction. We were previously unable to claim the adjustment due to the debt issuance for the 2020 GEO bond, and then also the state trust fund loan for TID 2. Claiming the adjustment allows us to reduce the general obligation debt service levy that we claim in Adjustment E. So it's to our benefit to claim the carryforward when one is available. The village board must approve an adjustment by a two-thirds majority vote in order to make that claim. So we are asking for a motion to approve or deny Resolution 22022, a resolution approving adjustments to the allowable levy limit and municipal levy limit worksheet for 2022.
First off, thank you for catching these and staying on top of these. I think that's important, it doesn't matter the dollar amount. I think it's important that we stay on top of items such as this, so thank you for doing that. And I, I'll make a motion if there, if anybody knows their comments.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22022, a resolution approving the adjustments to the allowable levy limit and municipal levy limit worksheet for 2022, as presented.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve Resolution 22022, a resolution approving adjustments to the allowable levy limit as specified and the municipal levy limit worksheet of 2022. Is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I think, I think we need a roll call on this one. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romes?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Finn Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 9B, TID number two expenditure period audit utilizing TID number two funds. Again, Director Lee Joyce.
Thank you. The village is required to complete a TID 2 expenditure period audit within one year of the end of a TID expenditure period. For us, that was August of 2021. We're not required to submit the audit report to anyone, but we are required to keep it on file for when the TID closes. CLA has completed our financial audits for many years now, and they have much of the data on file. They proposed to complete the work for a cost of $5,500. The fund source would be TID number two, and we are projected to have a fund balance of $104,200 at the end of this year. So we are asking for a motion to approve or deny $5,500 to hire CLA to complete the TID 2 expenditure period audit utilizing TID 2 funds.
I think this is great.
I'll make a motion to approve $5,500 to hire CLA to complete the TID 2 expenditure period audit utilizing TID 2 funds.
Second. Motion on the floor and a second to approve the $5,500 to hire CLA to complete the TID 2 expenditure period audit utilizing TID 2 funds. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is financial, though, we need to do this.
Yeah, we have a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romes?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Finn Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, item 10, discussion on future agenda items?
Not necessarily future agenda items, I wanted to say in the beginning, but I kinda missed my spot there. Wanted to say publicly to appreciate Blazer's Acres. I know I've been critical of them in the past in their level of caring or safety for people crossing the street. I did notice that they put up two, like, big billboards saying pedestrians don't have the right of way here. Stop, look for traffic. I was appreciative of that, because it really did correct it. A lot of residents come to me and tell me stories of people with strollers walking right out in front of their car going 45 miles an hour. So I'm really happy. It has definitely curbed that situation, and I appreciate his effort.
Anything else from the board?
I'd like to just make a note that we would likely cancel the November 7th village board meeting unless there is a highly pressing issue, just because we will have a lot of prep work for the election on the 8th. And this room will be full of election gear.
Okay. Anything else? Well, as much as I tried to draw this meeting out as long as possible.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Trustee Andrews and the motion by Trustee Schneider. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. This meeting is adjourned.
Why, do you miss us that bad, or what?
Yes.